If we could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting of the Madagung Scott City Council Saturday, April 25th, 2020 is officially called to order. I will now take the attendance record for the official minutes for this meeting. When I call your name, please say present. Councilman Jeff Mitchards.
Present.
Councilwoman Ruth Wilson Hayes. Present. Officer Randy Dong.
Yeah, I'm present.
Great, great. Is there a motion to approve the attendance record for this meeting?
A motion to approve the attendance record.
And I do second that motion, so the attendance record is approved for this meeting. As you can see, we are still locked in the Madagung Scott bunker, sort of waiting out this COVID-19 pandemic. Bernadette Marie Bedrow, who is in charge of the Madagung Scott COVID-19 Command Center. She did leave us some time ago. It could have been two weeks, could have been yesterday.
Time moves differently down here, it seems.
Yes, so the updates we have as of right now are a bit sparse. We can tell you, at the end of last meeting, the entire city of Madagung Scott had been put in jail to sort of wait out the pandemic. Officer Dong can sort of inform us now that everyone is back home.
Yeah, that's correct. Everyone's back home. We made what I would call a horrendous mistake, putting everyone in the same room. It turns out that that's the exact opposite, but luckily we've got a medical professional advising us now, which is very helpful.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I can say on behalf of the council that we do feel much more confident. We've been taking advice directly from Dr. Fauci for the last two weeks since he came on board, and he's really set us straight with some of what we maybe thought were best practices and weren't best practices.
So as you can see, we are practicing social distancing. I mean frankly, Councilman Mitchards and I haven't seen anyone else, anyone else since this started. But we are five feet apart, which is the recommended distance to keep between people, so we are five feet apart. You can measure that out, just for safekeeping.
And again, Dr. Fauci does recommend everyone stays five feet apart and complete face coverings as frequently as possible.
Yes. But yes, other than that, we haven't been outdoors, so this really is our chance to really connect with the people of Madagung Scott. I know for me, my entertainment has been, you know, a little spider in the corner who's sort of got a fly in his trap and how he's sort of figuring out how he's gonna eat that fly later. So that's been pretty fascinating to watch that.
Yes, and while I don't have any updates for the Madagung Scott community, as I have not been in the community since entering the bunker, but we do have a brief inter-bunker update, which is we have decided to move the canned peaches from the vegetable shelf to the dessert shelf. I know that won't affect many of you out there, but for those inside the bunker at this time, please take note of that update.
It's been delightful to have the canned peaches after dinner.
They really have been a shining light in an otherwise dark world.
Great. It is quite chilly. It is quite chilly in here. Well, I think if there are no further updates, I think we can begin to hear from our community members who I, again, we haven't seen or heard from in a very long time, so we're eager, eager to hear from you. And if you do have the virus, just let us know and we'll hand sanitize when you call in. That's, Fauci says that's the best way to sort of combat that.
Fauci is big on sanitizer, so I believe we have our first community member.
We have our first community member, yeah.
Ready to go here in a second. We have Gabe Chapman, I believe.
How are you? Oh, it's okay.
Hi, my name's Gabe Chapman. I'm in middle school and I've come to the city council before. You might remember to grieve the death of my Sims family from the game The Sims 4.
We remember.
Yeah, condolences continue.
Oh, gosh, Gabe.
It's never easy to lose someone, even if they're a digital character.
Thank you. Today, I'm coming to city council for some advice, and I did have to steal my parents' computer to make this call. As you might remember, my personal computer was ruined by the rain, which is why my Sims family died. Anyway, do you know about school picture day?
Oh, of course. It was my favorite day growing up. I got to doll myself up.
I would always slick my hair completely down forward so that my bangs were even.
That's nice. Ours was a few months ago, and it just so happened to coincide with the anniversary of the day that my Sims family died.
Oh, my gosh.
And I was really upset, and my picture was really bad. And my parents said that I had to do the retake day, and that was scheduled for last week, but as you know, schools have been closed, and so the retake day was canceled. And now I'm stuck with the bad picture, and I don't know what to do. I'll show it to you if you want, but I'll just...
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure it's not that bad.
It can't be as bad as you might imagine.
Oh, wow. Oh, that's...
It looks like maybe you had a sneeze or something happening, maybe right when he took the picture.
I was full on weeping, and my parents also bought a landscape one. They bought it as a punishment. They said that I look like Quasimodo.
Your parents bought your school pictures as a punishment?
Yeah, because they're embarrassed and they don't want me to ever do it again. They say that I'm too emotional. And really, all I'm doing now is I'm just sitting around and thinking about like what's gonna happen because of my bad picture, because this is the one that they're gonna use in the yearbook. And like, I know that the first thing that's gonna happen in the new school year when school starts back is everyone's gonna like, look at the yearbooks and like sign the yearbooks and go through the pictures because we all miss each other so much. And like, they're just gonna see it, and also because the school year was like, shut, like closed down early, that means there's less pictures, and less pictures means that there's less pages, and then it'll make it easier to find my really bad picture. And so I just need to know like some advice, like what to do, because like y'all are old and wise, and my parents...
Not that old.
Middle age, maybe.
I mean, my mom is still alive, so not that old.
I mean, look, Gabe, I mean, there's things that happen in high school, and you know, this is just one of those things.
I'm in middle school.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's, well, there's things that are outside our control, and you know, a lot of people are hurting right now, and I guess just our hearts go out to you. It looks like you have a camera. Maybe you could just sort of take a bunch of pictures of yourself and maybe sort of, you know, distribute those so that there's less of your bad picture.
That's a great idea. I mean, I think if you maybe take pictures of yourself, obviously making sure they're all properly sanitized, and mail out the nice pictures to each and every one of your classmates, I mean, that could be a great alternative to whatever book they might get.
Because like, all I do is like sit around and listen to Kelly Clarkson all day and think about my dead Sims and my bad picture.
Oh, gosh.
Well, Gabe, our hearts go out to you. You know, people are hurting, community's hurting right now, so I would say hold on to the good things in your life. You know, try to stay in contact with people as much as you can. I'm just gonna sanitize real quick.
Fauci says it's always important to sanitize every 10 minutes, 10 minutes. So we're about, we're 12 minutes into the broadcast, so we're a little late.
Okay.
And also, you know, maybe just stock up on extracurriculars when school gets back in session, because you know, if you're on the tennis team, you'll be in the tennis photo, you know, if you're, maybe even go for yearbook club, and maybe there's a way you could sort of, from the inside, sort of disrupt the publication.
I like that. I like that idea.
Yeah. Well, our hearts really are with you. I know this is a tough time, especially not being with your classmates and your friends, and on top of that, you know, you gotta, you gotta live with this little, this little picture, but you know, it'll only hopefully get better from here. That's really, we can only continue to stay positive through this.
Absolutely. Try to stay positive there, Gabe. Thank you so much for calling.
Thanks. Bye.
Goodbye, Gabe, and everybody out there, please don't look at Gabe's picture. If you are a middle schooler, if you do see, if you do see Gabe's picture, don't look at it, maybe flip past it, maybe know that he doesn't always look like he's crying, even though up until this point, I think that has pretty much been our experience.
Yeah, and I think all of us have collectively been crying this whole time. I know here in sort of quarantine, I can't help myself, you know, if I realize we're on our last can of, you know, black beans, I know that we're not gonna get another can of black beans until, you know, who knows when, so it's a tough situation.
We don't know when we'll be getting any food again down here at this point in time, we're waiting on a shipment.
Yep. So if our next caller, looks like we're just waiting on our end. Oh, it looks like they're ready. They're ready.
Great, we have Quentin Finebottom. Is this Quentin Finebottom?
Yes, it is, councilors. Hello.
Hi, Quentin. How are you?
I'm good. I am so happy to be here. I haven't been politically stimulated since the quarantine, and I'm hoping you can help with that.
That's what we're here for. We're here to bring some of the political drama back into daily life here in Madagung Scott.
Well, you know, I'm known around DC for walking softly and carrying a big stick. So you know, I'm not a fan of teabagging, I mean, the tea party, but every once in a while, I love to do a bit of mudslinging.
You know, I know on our end, we do try to keep things civil. I mean, there are times, especially living in a bunker, I mean Mitchard's really gets on my nerves, but we gotta keep it professional.
That's right. We try to keep things civil and professional, no matter what.
Oh, of course. I love when it's, you know, professional, whether it's two people caucusing or four senators caucusing, or you know, as many people caucusing as they can, you know, I love a big, strong caucus.
You know, I really do miss caucusing. I think that was always a very fun part of the political process, everybody getting in a room and sort of yelling in each other's faces about their preferred candidate, and that is something I'm missing during this period right now.
Absolutely. It's a shame what happened at caucus in Iowa this year. Just, you hate to see a caucus not go off like that. Sort of, you get right up, everyone's ready for it to happen, and at the last second, something goes wrong, and really hate to see it.
You know, you get blues right in the face. It's just, you know, councillor, I love how you have, you know, a little bit of a Teddy Roosevelt vibe going on.
Which, I don't, which of us are you referring to? I could see...
I could, I'm more Hunter Teddy, I feel like. I feel like this was how he would maybe go out into the wilderness.
Sure, and I might be more Secretary of the Navy, sort of starting a war in Cuba.
I mean, both of you look like Rough Riders to me.
Oh, gosh, that brings me back to middle school. Yeah, Rough Riders.
Why does that bring you back to middle school?
You know, that's where I first learned about Teddy and his Rough Riders. I just thought...
Rough Ride councillor?
Excuse me?
Could you give me a Rough Ride?
You know, I would love to create our own band of Madagung Scott Rough Riders, you know, and just get on horseback, patrol the streets. I think we could create a great group right here.
I think we could get, you know, when things turn up, maybe we get as many horses as we can and just see how many Madagung Scott people we can maybe do like a big sort of parade, a big Rough Riding Parade right through the middle of town.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea.
I would love you to parade right through my Panama Canal.
Oh, gosh, I wish, maybe when this is all over, we, I would love to see the Panama Canal. I think that was always on my bucket list of historical places to see, so maybe when planes are able, I mean, planes can still operate, but that would be a great, great place to see.
You know, councilors, do you consider yourselves trustbusters?
Oh.
No, it depends on the nature of trust, because I consider myself to be exceedingly honest with my constituents, and so in that regard, I'd say trust is something I keep intact at all times, but if we're talking about sort of big businesses, I can't think of the other word, like a monopoly, then I say, I say, we gotta bust, we gotta bust, we gotta bust the trust.
And if, am I trustworthy? Honestly, not really. I take donations from anyone.
Well, I'd let either of you bust all of this.
Oh, thank you so much. We really appreciate that.
Constituent who appreciates us for once.
Thank you. We haven't heard any praise in over a month, so this really warms our hearts.
You know, honestly, councilors, I'd love to, you know, have diplomatic relations with both of you, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think we do know what you're saying. I think we do, and I think that's something we definitely, we would definitely be open to.
Sure, any opportunity for civic involvement from the community is always welcome.
Would you join me at Camp David?
Oh, gosh.
Oh, to go to Camp David, to get to see where Bush did what he did.
I second it.
I'd give the National Park Service to come and maintain my bush, if you know what I'm saying.
I, you know, I have some crazy weeds in my front yard that really do need some tending to, so if I had someone working for the national parks that could come in and just whip, I mean, I haven't been to my house in a long time, so they're probably even more out of control.
You've gotta intermittently get official down there to really take care of those bushes, because what'll happen is you'll get invasive species, and you'll get things growing there that you didn't, that shouldn't be there to begin with.
Yep.
Oh, no, you don't want that.
No, no.
And speaking of the house, I mean, do either of you have the stamina right now for filibuster?
Oh, God. I mean, I, we've been in this bunker. I think we have the stamina for anything, quite frankly.
Because I can persist all night long.
More power to you.
That's incredible. Look at our community persevering through this crisis. Still have energy, ready to go, all night long, whatever it takes.
You know, I just have one question. How much is it after the first five minutes? You know, is it $20? Is it $69?
I think when you're talking about public service, I think it's on the house.
Yeah.
It's free.
We do this because we want to.
We do this for the love of community, and we love our community.
This is a free government sex hotline?
Excuse me?
Oh, no, this, this is the Madagung Scott City Council meeting?
What? This isn't a sex hotline?
No, there are children watching. This is, this is on cable access.
Did we get another phone number that's one number away from a sex hotline? Because we thought we got rid of it.
No, oh, my God.
Dong? Gosh.
Randy.
I'm so sorry. Children, this is not what politics looks like, I promise.
I've triangulated the call, but I've put the phone number in Photoshop and triangled it, and we'll be on it. We'll get this, we'll get this figured out.
Randy, I don't think that's what we need to do.
Well, thank you, Quentin. We, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service. I'm gonna go masturbate now. Bye.
Oh, wow. There are, there, this is on cable access. We do wanna remind our constituents, so...
If I had a dollar for every time we had an official government phone number that was one number away from a sex line of some kind, it's like the numbers are all sex lines.
Yeah, it's frankly absurd, but we are, we are moving on. I'm glad to know we both look like Teddy Roosevelt. That's exciting.
That's quite, and you know, make no mistake, he was certainly a bit of a xenophobe for sure, but
Right, right.
Beyond that, I think aesthetically, a very pleasing to look at man.
Right, he's on Mount Rushmore.
That's right.
Yeah.
Anyways. Do we have another caller, another citizen?
Do we have another caller, another citizen?
We're getting a bit of a loop.
Do we have another? Another caller?
Yeah, we can hear.
Caller, if you can hear this, just yell. Oh, there we go.
Oh, hello.
Do we have Woodrow Formica III? Woodrow Formica III?
Hey there, how you doing?
Hi.
Thanks, how are you, Woodrow?
So I was just looking, just looking to ask, how much longer do you think this virus is gonna be affecting our community?
Oh, gosh, I mean, Bernadette really was our liaison to the command center, so unfortunately, we can't give an exact timeframe, but Fauci is saying, I mean, it could go through, I mean, I don't know, through the end of the year?
Fauci, he's doing the calculations. He's locked in a room with a number of clocks and maps and sort of pendulums, and he's trying to figure out and triangulate and calculate when this will be over, but at this point, I don't think we could really have a solid number.
Well, hold on. Councilwoman Hayes, you're saying that this Spanish flu is gonna be over by the end of the year?
So it's not the Spanish flu. It's actually called, it's a coronavirus, but I think there's a potential that we might be doing some form of this social distancing, possibly through the end of the year. I think that's entirely a possibility.
What is coronavirus?
Okay.
I believe it's a type of, it's a type of virus, not unlike SARS.
Yeah, a virus, sure, but there's the Spanish flu and there's the coronavirus. What about the Spanish flu?
So that might, that might be gone.
I think we solved that one.
But I think that's figured out.
Oh, oh, you solved Spanish flu?
Well, we personally didn't, but...
When was Spanish flu solved?
You know, I don't remember from middle school history.
1918? 1918, 1919?
Were you or were you not aware that there are a number of us in a bunker hunkered down about the Spanish flu that began in 1918?
That is...
Not bunker 123.
Oh, my gosh.
There were the, hold, sorry.
You're telling me this has been solved since when? 1918, 1920?
There was, there was a program during Spanish flu where they built a number of bunkers across Madagung Scott, and then when Spanish flu was solved, they dug up all of them, but they couldn't find where they put bunker 123.
Yeah, there was a program. There was a program, Jeff, and now I'm just learning that Spanish flu has been gone. I am fourth generation underground, Mr. Mitchards.
You look great.
You look, you look wonderful.
I appreciate that. My great-grandparents came into this bunker with nothing but a bunch of canned food, and we've been surviving on it. I am supremely inbred, and you're telling me we all could have left after two years and everything would have been fine. What the hell is so funny?
Well, you know what? You're already prepared. You're, you know, it's, you waited out until there was something, something else, and you know what? You're in the best possible spot, because you and us were in the only bunkers in town, quite frankly, besides the Madagung Scott jail.
You're in the best place to be right now.
There is another goddamn virus in the United States right now.
Yes, that's right. It's the SARS-2 coronavirus, something, 19?
Two. There's been at least another one.
Oh, there's been a, over the last, I mean, we had...
There's been a bunch of different viruses since 1918, and you've had us in a bunker, eating canned tomatoes, and nobody told us.
You know, a little trick I found for canned tomatoes is that if you take the canned string beans and sort of mix them with the canned tomatoes, you kind of get like a...
Oh, we fucking know. We fucking know, Jeff.
Language. There are children watching.
You know how to cook tomatoes. It's all we fucking do, Jeff.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, not all of us are fourth-generation bunker people.
We are really new to the bunker game. We're new to the bunker game.
Okay, what the hell is the League of Nations doing about this?
I don't know how to tell you this, Woodrow, but your namesake had a bit of a bugaboo with the League of Nations. I believe it's...
What the hell did Woodrow Wilson, Thomas Woodrow Wilson, had a goddamn bug of you with the League of Nations? What is this?
I mean, he didn't, it was his fault. He created and he didn't join it. You know, I mean, he kind of did it to himself.
Yeah, point number one.
Did Harding have something to do with this, that asshole?
I honestly can't remember. He's been dead for over 80 years.
Yeah, he has, like my great-grandparents.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And most of the people I know. I'm going outside.
Oh, please, don't.
Now is not the time to do that. I mean, there's a...
We're encouraging, Dr. Fauci is telling everyone to stay in their homes.
I wanna see what time is like.
No, I mean...
I wanna know what like it is above ground.
You really are so much better off. You're so much better prepared than the rest, you know, of the world.
I'm gonna go to Holly Public Library. I'm gonna read all the books I can on what has happened, and everything's gonna be, I'm gonna tell your current president, I'm gonna tell the League of Nations, this is a crime against humanity. I am unsealing.
I don't know how to...
The day is unsealed day. We've been talking about it for four generations.
I don't know how to tell you this, Woodrow, but the Holly Public Library might be the least existing thing from your memory, if that makes sense.
Well, I believe that a virus has existed for 100 years, so I don't really, I don't really care what the city council of Madagung Scott has to say about that, because you knew, you knew about this. I'll be honest, I didn't expect you to know about this, and apparently you did.
Just one quick question, Woodrow. How are you accessing? Do you have the internet?
We, there's a Wi-Fi hotspot outside, and somebody dropped a laptop into a sewer. We figured it out.
Oh, okay.
Very, very smart, very smart.
Never Googled the Spanish virus, apparently. Should have done that.
Yeah, that would have been probably item number one on the to-do list.
My father, my father figured out how to get, how to get it a little bit. Oh, I'm going for a walk.
Well, Dr. Fauci does recommend a full face covering and keep at least five feet of distance between you and all other people you may see.
Wash your hands.
I'm gonna hug the first person I see.
Please don't, please don't do that.
Honestly, though, actually, Woodrow, being secluded, you're probably the healthiest person in Madagung Scott right now, so it's, you're not really hurting anyone. You're only hurting yourself.
He's also, he's also inbred and maybe doesn't have four generations worth of immunoantibodies that other people have. He certainly hasn't been vaccinated.
What was that?
What is an antibody?
Okay.
It's like protection. It's like a... Um, it's a, it's, it's like protection. It's like a medicine that protects you from viruses.
Okay, okay, I'll get some lithium and I'll go out and I'll find. Just some cocaine.
Woodrow, please, just stay, stay put. Stay, stay down there until, and we'll let you know when it's safe to come out, but right now, we don't know how long that'll be.
Irma, we're gonna see what the surface is like. Bye assholes.
Oh, gosh, there's children watching. Woodrow, we wish you all the best.
Please stay safe.
We can't, we can't tell the citizens of Madagung Scott what they can or cannot do. We can only sort of advise them on what they, they should do, right? So if Woodrow wants to go out and venture into the world, let him do it. Let him do it. I, I don't know what else to say.
I can't believe he's four generations has been living in a bunker, and they just got a laptop through a sewer grate. That is.
And they figured it out.
Can you imagine that?
I can barely open an email sometimes. Yeah.
Okay, it looks like we have our next, uh, citizen queuing up here.
Noella. Noella, hello?
You have Noella? You're on with the Madagung Scott City Council. Hello?
Hello?
Noella?
Noella.
We can see you. We see you, Noella.
We see ourselves in your glasses.
Do you see me?
Yes.
Yep, we can, we can see and hear you loud and clear.
Good, great. Hello?
Hello?
How are you?
How, you can see me right now?
Yes, crystal clear.
And we can see that you can see us because of the reflection in your glasses.
Okay, I'm Noella.
Hello.
Hi. Is there something you need?
There's some kind of, uh.
Concern?
Can you, uh, can you hear me?
Uh, yep, we can.
Can you hear me in the little, in the box? See that? It's working in the box?
We're not, we're not in a box. We are in a bunk, well, we're in a bunker.
Yeah, so kind of. A box of sorts.
Uh, it's, it's come to my attention that, um, with this quarantine of sorts, that people are, people are doing puzzles?
Yes.
Um, sure, yeah, I've heard of people doing that. We, uh, didn't plan that well. We don't have any puzzles down here, but, um.
There's some nice Thomas Kinkade ones, though. Looking to get my hands on when this is all done.
The painter of light.
Yes.
It's so nice. Um, well, I'm just, I've been hearing a lot about some people who are not puzzlers have been doing puzzles, and, uh, and they don't always know quite the right approach for the puzzles, and I thought I could contribute, um, I could contribute to that and, and talk about some puzzle techniques.
I mean, that sounds wonderful, you know, helping, and any, anything you can do to help people get through this, sort of spend their time productively, staying safe and isolated, and more than welcome.
Good, good. Um, and if I, and I just talk into the box, correct?
We can hear you perfectly.
What you've been doing is good.
Great. Um, so the first thing you wanna do when you, when you get a puzzle is you're gonna open the box.
Great.
Great.
That's step, it, the step one is if you open the box.
Sure, that's, I mean, that's where the puzzle is, so.
And, um, this gets a little tricky is, um, sometimes when you open the box, the pieces are in a bag.
Probably to protect from moisture or outside, you know, effects, yeah, I could see.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know either. I'm just supposing why the pieces might be in a bag.
I, I could not say. I, I just do the puzzles. I don't make the puzzles.
Okay, great. So, uh, through the box, through the bag.
And is, is the bag usually easy to open?
No, no. You're gonna need a friend or sister.
It's a two-person job to open that bag.
Well, and just wait till we get to the puzzle.
I shudder to think how many people are involved in the putting together of this puzzle.
Once you get that bag open, you're gonna wanna, um, put out the pieces. So you, you take all the pieces out and, uh, you're gonna flip them, because have you, you all have seen, have you seen a puzzle?
We have. I, I, I mean, I have. I believe you have as well, Jeff.
I've done a couple thousand pieces in my time.
How many pieces is this one?
Which one?
The puzzle we're talking about?
Yeah, the theory.
Oh, I have, I have so many puzzles.
Okay.
Uh, for a beginner, for a first timer who's just finding themselves in quarantine, how many pieces would you recommend?
That's a three-hundo.
Okay, that's reasonable.
With 300. So what, you're gonna get those, the pieces laid out, you flip them to the non-cardboard side, and you lay them out. And some of these pieces, they're gonna be shaped different.
Yep.
I gotta tell you, this is, this is Randy here, Noella. This is fat, so far, this is all new information to me.
Yeah.
Randy, have you never done a puzzle before?
I've, I mean, I've, so far, take all the steps she said, I've done them all the opposite, and which is probably why I've never done a puzzle correctly in my life.
So you never got the bag open?
Never got the, well, I've gotten it.
You put the puzzle box in the bag?
Yeah, yeah, that's me.
Common mistake?
Yeah.
That common, don't feel bad about yourself, Randy.
I do.
Don't.
I haven't seen a therapist about it. Oh, okay, I don't.
Feel good about yourself, Randy. Puzzling's hard. Okay. You, I'm still on the record?
We can hear you.
We're still, we're still in the box.
Okay. Now, I'm pretty good at puzzles, and so is my friend Barb. My friend Barb, she's been puzzling longer than me. I'm 93, she's 94.
So she's a little older.
So maybe a year more of puzzling than you.
Yeah, and, uh, so Barb, my friend Barb sent a video. Can you see?
We can see Barb.
Yeah, uh, please hit play on that.
First, you have to take and separate the pieces, and then you do the outside framework first. Then you turn over the pieces and hope that you find the one that you want to put wherever you want them to go. And that's about it, but you have to have patience. Okay?
Yeah, that's great advice from Barb.
That was quite a bit more succinct as well.
That's Barb. She's been doing this for a long time, but the key takeaway that I got from that is patience.
Hmm, that's what I took away, too.
Mm-hmm.
You have to have it.
Yeah, I think that's a great lesson for all of us right now, too. I mean, we've been patient for four weeks, living in a bunker.
Mm-hmm.
Speaking of bunkers, there was a young gentleman that called in before that was talking about a bunker for the Spanish flu.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
I had a young beau, um, back in 1918, and, um, he went into that bunker. I was wondering if you could find out if he's still in there.
We're gonna get in touch with Woodrow. What, what is your beau's name?
His name was Henry. I'm 93!
How old is Barb?
94.
Okay.
Great, well, Noella, we can, we can certainly try. It sounds like today was vault opening day for, uh, bunker 123.
So Henry could be out and about, God willing.
I mean, but you are in the immunocompromised community as a senior citizen of Madagung Scott, so I would not recommend going outside and trying to find these escaped, uh, people.
Oh, no. I'm not, I'm not allowed. My grandson will kick me in the behind if you know what I'm saying.
Well, I certainly won't condone senior abuse, but it sounds like he has your best interests in mind.
Let me know about Henry.
Will do. Thank you.
We will, we will keep.
Write it down and send it in the mail.
We wrote it down.
Yeah, we would probably email it, if anything. They do have a laptop.
I don't know. I don't do that.
Okay, great. Well, we'll be in touch. Thank you so much, Noella. Thank you, Noella, sorry.
What a treat. I feel like I've learned something new, um, about.
She's still, she's, oh, yeah, okay, they can't see it, but Barb.
Barb is still, no, no viewers can see it, but she, yep, she is still trying to figure this out.
Looks like, looks, oh, okay.
I don't think she realizes that we.
No, she's back on.
She's back.
Noella, if it, if it's really not working, you can just take the whole thing and put it in the trash.
The puzzle or the computer?
The computer.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you, Noella.
Thank you, Noella. Thank you so much. I mean, I wish, I wish we had planned ahead and gotten some puzzles. That would have been, that would have been exciting.
I know. I guess we could break or, or tear some things here and then try to put them back together. That's sort of like a puzzle.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, this entire back wall.
You want to destroy the back wall and try to put it back together?
Yeah, that could.
There's also a bunch of runes that I found in the bathroom.
Now, what is a rune?
A rune? Yeah, well, they seem to be Mickey Rooney runes.
Rooney runes.
I don't know. I mean, that's the puzzle.
That might, that might be the, I mean, I'll take a look at it. Nothing better to do.
Could be a nice, uh, five to six day project.
I've done a Sudoku, or runes like a Sudoku.
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Well, uh, great, we'll inspect that after this. I'm, I'm really looking forward to it. I'm really looking forward to a project.
As am I, yeah. So let's go. Our next, uh, our next community member should be calling in here, uh, shortly. Do we have a fairy godmother, I believe is the name of this scamper?
I need one of those.
A fairy godmother?
Yeah, you know, I wish I had a million dollars. I wish I had a.
Our fairy godparents' wish grant.
Oh, hello.
Ruth, it's me, your fairy godmother.
That's so exciting.
Sounds like your wish was granted.
Oh, wow.
I'm here to get you ready for the ball tonight.
There's a ball tonight?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, gosh, that, that's crazy. I mean, I have nothing to wear. I just have this scarf and this blazer.
Oh, I'm not here to get you physically ready. I'm here to get you emotionally ready for love.
Oh, great, okay, okay. I, 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 that could also be very helpful.
Ruth, tell me, how long have you been single for?
Oh, God, what was, it's been almost a year and a half since my divorce, uh, my second divorce, um, so.
Kept both names.
I kept both names. Uh, no one knows my original surname, so, um, I, I would say it's probably been about a year and a half-ish or so. I, I've been, yeah, I've been on some dates, but nothing, nothing serious.
Hmm, it sounds like you're having trouble calling in the love of your life to your life, your actual prince charming, and tonight I'm gonna help you change that. I'm gonna help you find your soulmate, because guess what, Ruth?
What?
Or your own soulmate.
Wait, really?
Yes, and I see you. I see your patience, and let me tell you something. Infinite patience yields immediate results when it comes to love. So ignore the year and a half that you've been alone and focus on the now.
That's so exciting. I mean, I feel like being here, I've been really struggling with my patience, but also I feel like I'm being challenged to be more patient, so I think this is a perfect opportunity.
Hmm, interesting. Now, Ruth, can you tell us, do you feel that you have been rejected by a lot of men?
I mean, quite frankly, I, I don't think I've ever really had that problem. Um, I think it's more, I think it's more, you know, uh, the, the sort of the cheating during relationships. I've never had a problem like getting a boyfriend or a husband. It's more just sort of keeping them, I guess.
Hmm, you know, we attract the love that we're comfortable with, not the love that we think we're, we deserve. So over and over again, we choose the love that we had with our last partner, because that's how we associate love, and I'm looking for you to open up and expand what you're comfortable with. Do you think you can do that tonight?
Oh, my gosh, in front of, in front of all these people? Oh, I, I'll.
I believe in you, Ruth.
My gosh, it's so nice to have someone believe in me. Um, sure, sure, I, I think, I think I can try.
Let me ask you a question about men.
Okay.
If a man goes into a steakhouse and on the way there he says, "I want a steak for dinner", and he gets to the steakhouse and he orders the chicken and says, would you say he rejected the steak, or did he make a different choice?
Oh, gosh, I mean, what's strange is why would you choose a chicken over a steak in the first place? That just seems like an absurd decision. Yeah. So I think he just made a wrong decision.
You're right. He made a wrong decision. He made a different choice.
Okay.
He didn't reject the steak. The steak doesn't need to go and cry, because he chose the chicken, which might have been younger and hotter and had less emotional damage, right? We have to move forward towards love.
Okay. Okay, I think that makes sense.
I would say he divorced the steak.
I think that's a little harsh, Jeff.
Well, just speaking from a legal perspective, I mean, he entered into a lifelong contract with a, with a porterhouse and then said, "No, thanks."
Tonight, Ruth, I'm gonna make you the strongest version of you if you repeat the magic words after me. Are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
I am worthy of the purest love.
I am worthy of the purest love.
My heart is open to both giving and receiving love.
My heart is open to both giving and receiving love.
I release and let go of all resentment.
I release and let go of all resentment.
Love is infinite.
Love is infinite.
I am enough exactly as I am.
I am enough exactly as I am.
I accept and embrace all parts of me.
I accept and embrace all parts of me.
Bippity, boppity, boo. You've done it, Ruth. Love is coming your way.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much, fairy godmother.
What is happening?
It's 7:45. I must go. I have a date with Beetlejuice.
No, please.
Beetlejuice, Beetlejuice.
Oh, my gosh.
What, what was that?
I've just found my true love, and it's me, Ruth Wilson Hayes.
So you're the chicken? Are you the chicken and the steak? Are you surf and turf?
I would say I'm a steak that's learned to love the steak. Does that make sense? Steak that eats a steak, loves a steak.
To be honest, I lost the analogy halfway through, but I am very hungry for something that doesn't come out of a can right now.
Well, that was frankly the most magical thing. I mean, my mask came down. I feel like I need to, I feel like I need to hand sanitize.
Please.
I don't want to put anybody in danger. That was, that was, I mean, I, I have never been so invigorated in my life. If we could go outside, I'd run a lap right now.
I think maybe this is, uh, sort of pointing out the, the issues with, uh, people not having interpersonal contact, uh, throughout the duration of this pandemic.
What does that mean, Jeff?
Oh, I just mean you haven't been able to, you know, go out and maybe date and see people, and so.
Or maybe that's just something about the Madagung Scott men. Maybe I'm just done with Madagung Scott men.
You'll get, you'll get no argument from me.
Yeah. Gonna, gonna spend some time with Ruth.
Well, you've got plenty of time to do that.
Yeah, plenty of time.
Um, let's see, we have, uh, another community member coming up here. It looks like we have the, uh, old tire swing from the edge of the baseball field. Is this the old tire swing from the edge of the baseball field? You are, you are on. You are on with the Madagung Scott City Council.
Tire swing.
How's everyone holding up? How's everyone holding up?
Uh, we're, we're doing okay, Tire Swing.
We're doing okay. How are you?
You guys doing okay? Jeff, Ruth, it's good to see you. I remember when you were both babes swinging on my swing at the edge of the baseball field.
Yeah, I mean, we had some good swings. I tell you, to be outside right now to feel that rush of air on my face instead of the recirculated purified air of this bunker would be a real treat right now.
I gotta say, it's nice. The wind is nice, the sun is nice, even the rain is nice, but I miss, oh, how I miss people swinging on me. I miss it every day.
We miss it too, and we both have children. You have children. I, I don't remember. We haven't seen our children.
It's been a while. Our children are, we don't know where they are.
And you've been isolated separately from your kids.
We, we have been, it's been very difficult.
Doctor Fauci told us that children are some of the highest transmitters, so he has forbidden children from being in contact with us.
Well, then you, where have you put them?
We've actually deputized them as the police force of the town above ground, so.
What?
Why?
It's a real, uh, oh, it's, it's a move I made. I figured who, you know, someone needs to make sure the town.
You deputized the children?
Yeah, it's sort of a real little rascal situation up there. The only people left above ground right now are a bunch of children, so.
I hope they're wearing masks.
Mister Dong, how's your butt doing? How's your butt? Is everyone getting their butts hugged? I just, God, I miss hugging everyone's butts.
Oh, we miss it too. We miss it too.
Let me say, in this time of isolation, I always feel like the thing I could do for people, right, is, is cradle your butt and let it swing forward and back on me, and I know you have chairs, but they don't wrap all the way around the way a wheel does.
That's true.
One thing I've been suggesting that people do is if you want to simulate being on a tire swing, just take a, if you have a lover, have them donut themselves around your midriff.
What if your lover is yourself?
If your lover is yourself, then take a towel and get it wet, and then put it in the microwave. Wrap it around your midriff.
Okay.
It simulates a human, a human heat, and then if you toss yourself backwards and forwards, do hip thrusts, it's like being on a swing.
Okay, I think there's a dirty rag around here somewhere, so I, I'm gonna try that.
Yeah, you guys have microwaves in the bunker.
We do have a microwave, yeah, um. I believe somebody put a can of, uh, of beans in it and turned it on, and it started smoking, so we haven't tried to use it again since, but.
Oh, okay. Hey, you guys remember building?
Oh, yeah. How, how's, how's?
Oh, old building over there, yeah.
Yeah, old building. Old building's doing okay, but if you see any of those deputized kids, I actually saw a, a manhole up in there. So you wanna go smoke them out? Building's got somebody in it.
A manhole, or a, a man hold himself up in the old building?
A man's holed up in old building.
I see. Did, do you think this is nefarious, or what? I mean.
Oh, I was just, everyone's supposed to be isolating, so I was worried, maybe he's isolating there. But I don't know if, I don't know if he's liaising with people.
I mean, we can, we can certainly try to get the kids to investigate. It sounds like you're, uh, you're sort of acting as like a neighborhood watch of sorts for the, for the field, kinda poking in on your neighbors.
Yeah, I'm on Nextdoor. Yeah, I am.
How are, how are things otherwise in general? Are people seem to be behaving? Is crime an issue?
Well, what's interesting is without the people around, nature has really started to come back in a lot of ways. Um, so.
It looks like the grass there is pretty tall.
Yeah.
The grass is so, it's been so long since the tall grass tickled my underbottom. But now it, now I'm feeling that brush up against me again, and it's bittersweet. Because it means it hasn't been load and, and no one can come near me because it's tick season and because it's cool.
Is springtime your favorite season?
Oh, springtime, oh, springtime, oh. Springtime is my favorite season, Ruth, you know, you know, you know me so well.
I remember when I used to play Little League, uh, T-ball, we would all, uh, we'd all play, and then afterwards we would get orange slices and we'd line up for a turn on, on you there, Tire Swing.
And Jeff, you pooped your pants in me.
Well, I mean, we don't need to go there. I mean, kids have, kids have, uh.
How did, how did Tire Swing recover from that?
It's fine. I consider myself sort of surrogate parent to every child in this town, you know, every child. I've sort of, I've, I've, I'm not nursed, but I've swaddled in my, in my wheel well.
And in a way, all the children have kind of gone through you, sort of like a, you know, a spiritual birthing of, uh.
So well put, so well.
I don't know if that's true.
Extremely well, per, it's perfectly put. It's perfectly put. I consider that I've birthed every child who's passed through my tire hole. Really, and so I'm mother to all, mother to all the children of Madagung Scott, all my little deputies.
That's great. What a great.
I just wanted to know how you were all doing, and it looks like you, you're doing well, so take care of yourselves, okay, just come see me when this is over and have a swing for old times' sake, okay?
You got it, Tire Swing.
Yeah, we absolutely, we absolutely will.
Okay, alright. God bless.
God bless Tire Swing.
Tire Swing, take care.
Oh, what a, what a treasure. I do wanna, so we are keeping an eye on the chat uh, as this is going on. I do wanna address one of the questions in here. It says, "Why isn't, uh, city council using this fairy to get rid of the COVID?" Um, and I do wanna say that, um, the fairy godmother, she, I, it felt like I was in a trance, and it did feel very, very focused on, on me. Um, so, uh, quite frankly, I, it did, it didn't, it didn't come to mind, which was certainly maybe an oversight. Uh, so maybe next time we, we get a visit, uh, maybe that's something I should ask.
We can certainly ask, but I don't, I don't know.
Felt like it was relationship advice.
I don't think fairy godmothers are there to solve, uh, global pandemic crises so much as sort of, uh, interpersonal issues and sort of, uh.
Right.
Yeah, I, we can, we can check with Doctor Fauci, but so far he has said, uh, don't interact with any, uh, fairies or mystical creatures that you may see, so.
Yeah, um, but we are keeping an eye, uh, I think what's been great about this virtual format, which is new to us, is we, it's, it's a great way to sort of connect with our constituents in a different capacity, so um, we are keeping an eye on this, uh, as it is continuing, uh, to sort of develop, uh, and it looks like we may have our next community member calling in.
Looks like we should have, uh, Julio and Don Julio?
Hello?
Hi Julio, Don Julio, which one?
Hello, this is Julio.
Hi Julio.
Julio, how are you?
Where's Don Julio?
I don't, I don't know, um.
Where's my, where's my brother?
It looks like, uh, Officer Dong, he's running our IT, I think he's trying to figure this out.
But last time, I, I think you called in and you and your brother, uh, you were lost, separated from each other. Oh, it looks like we're getting him now. Uh, we might have your brother coming in here in a second.
You're coming back in, hold on.
Don Julio, were you there?
Oh, there we go.
Okay, we got Julio and Don Julio, they're there, how are you?
Don Julio, wait, my brother's there?
Hey, hey, who, hey, Don Julio, it's me, Julio.
Oh, you won't believe what happened to me, I've been trying to reach you all day.
I've been trying to reach you all day. Don Julio, I was abducted by aliens. Yeah.
Me too.
You too?
I was abducted by aliens in the house.
I mean, I got abducted by aliens in the house.
They took me out of my room and then they forced me into this closet.
Yeah, they forced me into a different closet, and, and they, they didn't want me to leave, cause, um, cause of the coronavirus, the, the aliens were abducting at home.
Same, same, man, same happened to me.
Gosh.
City council, we need your help, we need to get out of here.
We need help.
Now, uh, if this is anything like last time, uh, we're gonna start where we did, which is advise you to open the door to the closet that you're in.
What do you mean last time?
Last time?
Who are you talking about?
Didn't you call in?
What are you talking about?
Didn't you call in one month ago? Was that, was that not you?
I think, I think people are blending together.
You're talking about Horatio and Ignacio, we.
Are you friends with them?
No.
No.
You know them, but you're not friends with them?
We tuned in, we tuned in to the show last time.
It's not a show, it is a meeting.
Whatever it is.
Watch the show, something cool is gonna happen.
Yeah, we heard something cool is gonna happen, nothing cool happened.
Some would say that, uh, you know, city council meetings are very cool, so something very cool did happen.
Yeah.
We were abducted.
We were abducted by aliens, listen.
They sound exactly like the kids from last time. It feels like a deja vu.
That's not fair, we're different people.
We're different, we have different names. It's not fair at all.
That's not fair.
What do you think fair means?
Fair means the truth.
Fair means the truth, and the truths will set you free.
Talking about get set free, I need to get out of here.
I'll tell you, as, as an officer of the law, fair and truth are not the same thing.
Shut up.
Oh, whoa, whoa.
Alright, that is, that is Officer Randy Dong you're speaking to.
Don Julio, Don Julio, what, what happened to your, what were your aliens like?
They sent me messages, and encrypted in the messengers were blueprints to build a machine.
What? No way?
I built a machine, and the machine was just a little ball for me to climb into.
What?
So I climbed into the ball, and then the ball dropped me through another machine that I had to build. And then I went through a wormhole that took time.
Wait, so your aliens were like the plot of Contact?
Yeah, and like the plot of Contact, I, the alien looked like Dad.
What? Like Dad? That's crazy.
Yep.
My aliens, they showed up. What?
You share a father, your brothers?
We're brothers.
Oh, just like, just like the boys from last time.
But we were abducted by different aliens.
What? You, the same thing didn't happen to you?
It didn't, no. I was, I was abducted by tall aliens. Tall, tall, dark aliens, they were so, and there was a mist. There was a mist that they, and they, they had, they spoken in circles. And now, now I, I, I learned to talk to them, and I can see time.
You got Arrival.
Arrival, that's the one I was trying to think of.
You got Arrival, yep.
My aliens are the Arrival aliens.
Did you, um, see that in the future, you had a daughter, but the daughter passes away? But you know, you know that you should just appreciate the time that you have with that daughter, instead of making the choice not to have him, cause you know that it'll cost her.
I hope no one watching this wanted to see Arrival.
What'd you say?
I said I hope no one watching this wanted.
I'm gonna have a daughter and she's gonna die.
No, what, what did city council say?
I said I hope no one watching this wanted to see Arrival.
You just spoiled the plot of Arrival.
No, I didn't. You don't know how it happened.
You don't know anything.
I've seen the movie, but there are, there are probably constituents that might wanna see it as well.
This is actually, this is a huge pain in the ass, cause I thought what I, I, I thought what, I got what I thought was Netflix, but it's one streaming service with nothing but Arrival, and now.
Why?
Just different lengths and different cuts of it, now I'm, I'm totally screwed.
That's so stupid. Why would you pay for that?
I thought it was, I thought it was Netflix.
Okay, now, is it possible that the two of you boys watched Alien movies?
No, we wanna talk about Dong's thing, that's crazy.
Yeah, that's stupid. Who, it's actually, that's actually really stupid.
He said it was, he said it was a mistake. He didn't know he was.
I was duped.
You don't make mistakes.
How are you duped into paying for a subscription service month after month?
You get an email that a prince of Nigeria is offering you free Netflix for life if you send him ten dollars.
That sounds pretty good.
And, yeah, it did, and then it's just Arrival.
Alright, is there anything we can do for you Julio and Don Julio? Is there anything?
We need to get rescued now!
We need to get home. We, you need to help us get home.
Where are you now?
We're at home.
I'm in a closet in my house.
Yeah.
So you're home already.
Well, yeah, but we need to get, you don't get it.
It's, it's, it sounds like the problem is solved.
We've been abducted by aliens, so we need to get home.
But you're in your home.
And you're talking to us like we're, like we're already there, but we're abducted.
We've been abducted by, listen to me.
Okay.
Will you help me?
Yes, is there, okay, um, Don Julio, is there a door in, that's, yes, that's you. Is there a door in front of you?
No. The door's to my right.
Okay, walk, can you walk towards that door?
No.
Why not? Why can't you walk towards the door?
I've been strapped to the closet by aliens.
You've been strapped to the closet.
Can you show us what you look like right now?
No, I've, I've, I have a shirt on.
You were gonna say you're naked with a shirt on.
Thank, uh, thank you in advance.
If I keep, if I keep panning down, you guys will get arrested.
Okay, don't pan down.
Please don't.
Okay.
Pan, pan down is a threat. Don Julio, use your pan down as the threat.
Yeah, you're right. Save us, I pan down.
Pass an ordinance now to get us home.
Yeah, vote.
Okay, I would like to propose a motion to get Julio and Don Julio home. Do I have a second?
Uh, second?
The motion passes. Julio and Don Julio, you are officially home.
Alright, I'm gonna send you a cop car full of children to see if they can get you out.
Randy, please, don't, tell me these kids don't have guns.
They don't know how to drive.
Thank you, and the bege, Randy, in the beginning I hated you, but I've grown to respect you.
Don Julio, phone home, phone, phone home.
Okay, take care of you two, maybe don't watch so many scary Alien movies, uh.
Phone home.
Thank you, Julio and Don Julio.
But we do applaud you staying isolated, and watching movies is a great way to pass the time while you're doing that.
Great way to distract yourself, and I know, it sounds like in the bunker, we're gonna be watching a lot of Arrival.
Well, now we know how it ends.
Yep, I have seen it though. It was mostly, I, I just didn't want anyone else to be spoiled.
You're concerned for your constituents.
Exactly.
Have you noticed that the language that the squids speak in Arrival looks like, uh, coffee mug stains?
Yes.
It looks exactly like a coffee mug stain. I wonder if that was on purpose.
Fascinating. Alright, well, um, we should be getting another uh, constituent calling into us shortly. Honestly, I'm having a great time.
Just currently waiting for one of the two, oh, and they're gone. They were on for quite a while after.
Oh, they weren't disconnecting.
I'm having a great time really connecting, uh, with the people of Madagung Scott. It's been truly, truly a pleasure.
I tell you, it's some much-needed human contact, because besides that, it's just you, me and Dong down here for, uh, weeks now.
Yeah, in our own separate corners, counting our toes. Uh, thinking about civilization, uh, so it's, uh, it's been a bit morbid. Um, alright.
Great, is this, uh, do we have Mr. Morris on the line?
Mr. Morris.
You do, what's up fam?
Hey.
Wow, so good to talk to you guys. Uh, how are you holding up?
We, we, we're doing okay, uh, given the circumstances. I mean, it looks like you're doing pretty well. Where are you calling from?
Hey, it's coronavirus, so I'm just finding my beach, you know what I mean? Uh, I'm in my humble apartment, just trying to make the most of it.
Oh, okay, you are, cause for a second I couldn't tell if that background was, uh, if you were actually out in a tropical location or not.
No, Zoom, it actually has this very cool feature that I don't think a lot of people have found yet, where you can get a picture from anywhere on the internet and just put it as your background.
Wow.
We, you know, yeah, we've just discovered Zoom, uh, Randy, uh, actually just discovered it. Uh, so, this is our first day using it, so, uh, I'd be, I'd love to sort of practice that for next time.
Yeah, my students showed me a lot, like, you know, they kinda pranked me because, uh, they hacked into my computer, Zoom's actually pretty lax with the security, and you know, had some, uh, had some fun as I was trying to do my online lesson and, you know, put the Tommy Lee sex tape behind me.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, wow.
Funny thing.
Throwback.
Yeah, I'm surprised, kid, that's a pretty old reference for, uh, middle school kids.
No, they're good, they did keep it. They, and I taught them that, so, you know, it's a little bit, it's a little bit on me.
They're paying attention.
They are, and that's actually, that's actually why I'm calling in, because, you know, the kids and I have been talking about it, and at first, man, this online schooling stuff, it was tough. I didn't like it. I'm a teacher, I'm used to getting into the blackboard and getting my hands all chalky, and that's my sweet spot, but as I kept doing it, me and the kids were really liking it. We really like this, we can kinda come in at our own time, we can sort of check out early, and we can get all the schooling done much faster, and so can we do this forever? Can we just keep doing online school forever? Do we have to go back?
I mean, that's an interesting question. I think we'll have to see, study-wise, if, if the test scores reflect that students are learning better in this environment. I mean, uh, it's certainly a cheaper operation, I would say.
Yeah, and there's still a lot of unknowns. I mean, as, as we said, Doctor Fauci said, there's a chance this goes on through the end of the year, so I, I, I do see, I mean, at least through the end of the year, there could be a chance virtual learning is sort of the norm, and, and so I, I, I think there might be sort of a trial and error period where we see, uh, how we can, uh, get, get some good results.
You know, you're saying a lot of what I've been talking to my students about. We've been doing these, uh, Zoom happy hours, which is really fun. They're not drinking, I'm drinking.
Oh.
Drinking in front of students?
Well, they don't know. I mean, they might think it's just juice, and I don't tell them what it is, anyway. So, th- they mentioned a lot of the things that you just mentioned, and we're thinking, you know, my, my friend now, I guess, he was my student, but now he's my friend, Trevor, he was like, you know, we're gonna be doing this for so long. It's just gonna feel normal after a while, and going back to school, that's what's gonna feel so weird. And so, once we get into this normal cadence of online learning, do we really wanna disrupt that momentum by going back to school? And he honestly, he had me thinking, and so I had to bring it to the city council, be like, I think the kids got a point.
Now, now you did say your friend, not your student. Are you finding that your students are more becoming your friends than your students at this point?
You know, the bond, we're physical distancing, we're not social distancing, and it's a very very, very fine line that we're walking, but we're becoming closer, and that's why I think this online school stuff, there's some merit to it. I feel closer to them than I feel as close to my own family. They're my best friends now, and I don't want this, this fun train to end, so can we do this forever?
So interesting. I, I think initially I thought this was, uh, a really sort of an educational opportunity, but it sounds like the students may just wanna stay home.
It sounds like, uh, sort of extending the summer indefinitely, uh, sort of a uh, schools out forever, uh, Alice Cooper kind of a situation that we might be.
Really think so?
I think your students are conning you.
No.
I mean, just the fact that they seem like they're warming up to you, making it sound like it's your idea, um, this could be sort of an elaborate student uh, gaslighting of you, uh, Mr. Morris.
I mean, we've been, man. We've been like having these like really cool Discord chats, and they showed me, they helped me build my own island in Animal Crossing, I have a tent set up and everything. We've been like having these like really cool Discord chats and they showed me, they helped me build my own island in Animal Crossing. I have a tent set up and everything.
Well, I'm sure the kids like you. I'm sure they appreciate you. It seems like they could be taking advantage of you a little bit here, uh, using your clout as a teacher to sort of, uh, get to do what they wanna do.
Shoot. Well, this is gonna make Monday awkward. All right, well, okay. All right, so scratch that plan. Monday's coming up. School's still in session. How should I go about secretly letting them know or not letting them know that I know and steering them back to wanting to go to school?
How do you make kids wanna go to school?
The age-old question.
Hmm. Is there a way to, uh?
Chicken nuggets?
Right, chicken nuggets.
Chicken nuggets, okay. They have been super receptive to chicken. Every single meal that they've had thus far, I think, has been chicken nuggets. So that's a thread to follow.
Yep, free chicken nuggets at school.
Right, but I mean, but that requires being physically in the school, right? I mean, as we're online, unless you mail chicken nuggets to the students' parents.
Uh, chicken nugget pickup?
Um, maybe.
You could try a talent show.
Oh!
A talent show? An online, online talent show?
An online talent show.
Okay. They're actually a super talented bunch. I mean, how they hacked into my Zoom and had fricking the opening salvo to the Pam Anderson and Tommy Lee sex tape is pretty advanced.
They're clever. They're clever.
Very clever.
Uh, we have, we have a, a notion coming in from the chat right now, which is maybe, uh, do like a movie day, maybe show them the movie Arrival. But, uh, hopefully they weren't watching this or they might've had the ending spoiled.
Is that from one of the alien twins?
Actually, no, uh, from a different constituent.
Okay, great.
Uh, by the way, I wanted to, as you know, uh, the head of the police right now, and I'm also tasked with cyber crimes. I'm just curious, as I'm, I'm creating a report for them breaking your computer, you said you told them about the sex tape?
Ah, not really. I kind of like tried to sum up the zeitgeist of the, you know, nineties and two thousands for them. Tommy Lee, Pam Anderson came up and they Google faster than they fricking breathe these things.
Dong, we don't have a lot of good teachers in the city, so I probably can't really lose this guy.
Uh, Mr. Morris, what, what do you teach again?
Uh, math.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morris. Thank you so much.
I'll let the students know about the talent show.
Will do.
You know, maybe find a way to make math fun, you know, maybe add fortnights together, uh, you know, multiply, um, what's another kid thing?
Um.
Quibi?
It, do kids like quibi?
I don't know what it is. I have no idea what it is.
Vampire Weekend?
Yeah, maybe it could, uh, divide Vampire Weekend.
Yeah.
It's an idea.
But, there you go. Uh, I feel like we need to check in on the teachers. I feel like we've been a little checked out on them and how they've been doing, uh, with the virtual learning. Cuz if, if this is sort of what the norm is, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned.
Right, and given the average age of our teachers and sort of the technology literacy level, um, it's quite possible that they're teaching to a bunch of, uh, like still images of children who.
And all, well, the, the kids are out on the police force. So are the, are the kids even in the classroom?
That's a really good question.
Not all of the children are on the police force, to be clear. I've, I deputized my son. He's the head of police.
What was your son's name again?
It's an old, well, it's an old Nordic name, so it's.
Yep.
Thick Dong.
Thick Dong.
Great.
Yeah. Trying to, tried to, I tried to, you know, not set him up for, uh, failure with me, you know, my name being Randy Dong, and that's funny. So I thought I'd give him kind of a family heritage name.
Right, sort of zag instead of, uh.
Yeah.
Zig.
Great.
Great.
All right.
Well, we should have another, uh, community member calling in shortly here. Uh, I believe we have, uh, Herman Schnitzel. Uh, coming up here shortly. Let's see, looks like we're connecting to Mr. Herman Schnitzel.
Herman Schnitzel. Great.
Uh, looks like we have him there. Hello, Mr. Schnitzel.
How are you?
Oh, hello, how are you all doing?
Good.
It's very good to see you, yes, yeah. Even with this social distancing, I, a conductor, have been having such a hard time, um, getting in touch with people, getting in touch with my music. I can play it online. It's quite easy. It's quite fun, but to see you and to have time to spend with you is quite lovely. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Of course. Thank you, thank you for calling in. We, it's great to hear from you.
Now, I, I do have a request. Um, since, of course, orchestras to try to put together concerts is so very hard. But, but my request would be, I think that there is sorely lacking a decisive and very studious practice of the art of karaoke. And this, of course, is something that we can all still do, though we may not be at bars spilling beers on each other and screaming mazza. It's the top of our lungs cuz we all love dancing, yes, but there are other classics in the classic, say, karaoke repertoire. And I was simply wondering, as a small humble conductor, if you would like to perhaps perform some karaoke this evening, hm? With me conducting, yeah?
Uh.
With you conducting the karaoke?
This is what I am saying. I'm trying to bring a level of artistic quality and actual form to the art of karaoke. I would love, I would love if we would be able to make beautiful music together. Would that be okay, would you fall?
I see. I mean, uh, we have not been outside of this bunker in four weeks and karaoke sounds like a blast to me. I don't know, Ruth, do you?
I, I, again, I, I think the most exciting thing that's happened to me this week was that spider and that fly, so this is, this is great. This is great.
Okay, okay. Now, I have queued up and this, of course, the technology, we'll see what is happening. If you can see your screen, let me know if you can see this very easily. Is this easy to pick up here? You see the screen, yeah? You see my hands?
We can see your hands.
Yep, we can, we can see it.
Okay, so we, we have a screen here and I was thinking a beautiful duet that was quite popular in the late eighties. It's a great tune. It was nominated for an Academy Award for Best Song. Quite fun. It was used in the film Dirty Dancing. You know, perhaps you are, perhaps you know this song? Perhaps you, uh, you understand where I'm going?
I mean, I know Patrick Swayze's abs.
Don't we all, my darling? Don't we all? Now, this would of course be a duet and in order to help you understand, cuz, cuz of course, of course, I am a conductor. I would, I would, I would help out. I would have, this would be Jeff, this is when he was singing, and this would be for Ruth. This would be when Ruth would be singing. Is this, is, is this adequate? Now, of course, I will not try to get in the way of the words, but I could also just scream Jeff, Ruth. That might also be easier. But, but this could, this, this of course could be helpful. Now, now, I simply want to check my levels like, like any good artist, like any good performer. Now, I just want to see, can you hear this? Of course, it's not playing now.
Looks like buffer, buffering presently?
Buffering a little bit.
There we are.
Okay. I don't hear anything.
Not hearing anything. Okay, hold on, hold on. Let me, of course, raise it to the tippy, tippy top. Okay, and let me move it a little closer and let us, let us see what's the microphone will pick up. Well, I was simply started.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. Oh, I think, yep, we hear it.
Is that, is that, is that hearable?
Yep, it's, it's, yep, a little bit.
Okay, okay. Can you read? Can you read the words on the screen?
You know, Jeff was smart enough to also pull up his own, so I think we, it's good that we have the screen and then we have Jeff's phone.
Wonderful. Well, actually, if you, if you would prefer to have the audio on your side, that would be fine. And then I would be free to move and conduct.
Yeah, I think you're, I think Randy Dong might be pulling this up here.
Simple. It is, it would simply be, um, of, it, the, the file on the YouTube is, uh, Bill Medley, Jennifer Warner. I've had the time of my life.
Yep, it looks like we've got it, we've got it open here.
Beautiful. Oh, my God, it's the technology.
Free to conduct. I think this will be playing through, uh, online or else we will look insane.
Uh-huh. Wonderful, wonderful.
But I'm gonna need you to say when, who sings because I don't know that.
Yeah, who starts?
There, there we are. Here we are. Here we are. Here, here. So, 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 so there, the root, and here Jeff. There we go, there we go. Okay, so I will say Jeff, Jeff, you will start. You will start the song.
(singing) Had the time of my life. You know, I've never felt like this before. Yes, I swear it's the truth and I owe it all to you.
(singing) Had the time of my life and I owe it all to you.
Dance number, the dance number, yes.
(singing) I've been waiting for so long, now I've finally found someone to stand by me.
Don't you, don't you, don't you, don't you?
(singing) Saw the writing on the wall as we felt this magical fantasy.
Back to Jeff.
(singing) Now, passion in our eyes, there's no who. It's secretly.
There you are, there you are, there you are. Beautiful, beautiful.
(singing) Take each other's hand as we seek to understand the urgency.
Jeff!
You're the one thing.
(singing) I can't get enough of.
Yes, yes.
(singing) So I'll tell you something.
Both of you, both of you now.
(singing) This could be love because (singing) I had the time of my life. You know, I've never felt like this before. Yes, I swear it's the truth and I owe it all to you.
Oh, beautiful, wonderful.
Wow, wow, that was exciting. Do we have to keep going? Wow, that was.
No, no, oh, that was enough.
Wow.
That was a beautiful two minutes of splendor for me. Ah.
I have not felt that alive in four weeks.
Jeff, do you think I could pick you up?
Yeah, bravo.
Do you think you could run and I could pick up? I'd probably die.
We could certainly try. I don't know, I've put on some weight since I've only been eating canned food, so I, I wouldn't wanna put that to the test. My God, thank, Mr.
The high salt content has not hurt your high range. I will tell you this, my friend. The show has done wonders for your vocal cords.
We haven't been to choir practice in a bit, but I think we're missing it. The council choir.
I simply loved your willingness to try this. It was beautiful, beautiful. I think that the art form, we, we can elevate it. You know, of course, technology needs to come away. You know, sometimes the conductor needs to understand why things don't work. But after that, after that, oh, oh. My conductor bones, they are vibrating right now.
Oh, so, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Schnitzel. That was just a blast. I really haven't had.
Really, truly, truly exciting. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I was so happy.
Thank you. It looks like the chat really wanted us to try to attempt that lift. Um, my bones are incredibly frail right now.
And mine are incredibly dense, uh, again, as a result of the salt content and everything I've been eating.
And again, guys, how can we do s- social distancing if we're doing a lift?
That's right. That's a good point. It might seem fun. Might seem fun to lift your friend, but Dr. Fauci says no-go. Um, do we have another citizen coming up here? It looks like we have, uh, Father Matthew? Do we have Father Matthew on the line?
Father Matthew. Hello?
Hello, Father Matthew?
Hi.
Can you, can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you.
Loud and clear.
Hey, hey, guys. Hey, guys, how's it going?
Good, how are you, Father?
Good, good, good. Uh, uh, just wanted to call in, uh, and just sorta reach out to you guys cuz I know you have a lot of clout in the community.
I would like to think so.
Uh, the Catholic Church is, huh, well, we are struggling, um, and I am a little worried that we have some, uh, some sinners in the community. Um, I think, you know, based off of what I've seen here tonight, we definitely have some sinners in the community. Um, there was a lot of sexual energy in that song I just heard from you, so congrats on that. Congrats on that.
All in good fun, all in good fun. Jeff is married.
Got a full five feet of space between us here, so, um, plenty of room for the Lord.
Yeah, well, five feet from him, five feet from her, you know, you need, you need social distance all around. All right? All right?
I don't know that I understand the difference.
I mean, I'm sure things are hard right now. Obviously, uh, gatherings have been limited, so I'm, all, all sort of church services have got, have gone virtual. So I, it's obviously very difficult, I, I imagine, for you right now.
Yeah, um, but the one thing, the one thing that I am most concerned about is, is the sinning and the, the lack of, uh, repenting for those sins. Um, we haven't had anyone come to confessional in about two full months now. And, you know, I understand with the degree from, from, from the town that we can't have confessional. Uh, but I have set up, um, a virtual, a virtual network here that you can, you can do it. Granted, I don't have the ability to make it anonymous. Um, but I just want people to feel.
Streaming on the internet right now, so, uh, anonymity is kind of out the window.
Exactly. Um, but I just want the community to know, um, that, uh, they can feel safe to tell me everything.
Okay.
And I was wondering if, uh, you, Ruth, and you, Jeff, uh, if we could do a little, um, confession.
Well, um, I don't know that I have any big sins to confess.
Oh, really?
I've kind of been down here.
Come on, Jeff. Come on, I know you have confessions.
Okay, uh, well, I guess as to set a good example for everyone, uh, I can demonstrate some confession. Uh, the other night when we were.
Well, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't wanna interrupt, but we need to do it, you know, in the, in the proper way. So can we, can we start it with, forgive me, Father, for I have sinned?
Oh, right, uh, forgive me, Father, for I have sinned.
Good job, good job.
Uh, so the other night when we were, uh, sort of divvying up, uh, the clean water bottles, uh, I was pretty thirsty and so, uh, when I was supposed to only take one water bottle, I actually took a drink out of another one, uh, and then filled it back up with tap water and then put it back. So that was a sin that I, but it looks like we have plenty of water, so, uh, I don't think it impacted our survival, but, uh, it, it was certainly wrong to lie about it.
Okay, okay. Um, yep, do three Hail Marys and, um, you know, sort of just think about what you're doing cuz not only are you stealing and lying, but you're also potentially infecting people, so.
I will, I will do that. Thank you, Father.
All right, and, um, Ruth?
Yeah, um, we had a situation earlier this week where, um, we ran out of toilet paper and we've been sort of using, um, just sort of bits of scrap paper, uh, from notebooks that we had lying around. Um, and I just wanted to say that.
Yeah.
I, I use the last of the toilet paper.
Yeah, oh, no.
What's, what's happening?
Are you on your, are you on your phone, Father? We can see through the video, it looked like you were, uh, on, sort of on your cell phone during, uh.
No, no, I, no.
What, what was that?
I wouldn't be on my, I wouldn't be on my phone. Ruth did some to- Ruth did toilet paper?
You were listening to, to Jeff's confession.
You said Ruth did some toilet? That's not, that's not what she said at all.
Yeah.
What? What, I, I don't, I, I mean, uh, do you mind, do you mind doing it again?
Father, your face is bright red. I think it's pretty clear that you weren't paying attention during Ruth's confession.
No, 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 I, I'm listening, I'm listening.
Are you lying right now? Are you lying? Do you need to confess something?
No, 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 no. I, uh, I, I'm good. I'm totally good.
You know, as city, as city councillors, we are technically allowed to hear confession from people, uh.
Yes. By law.
So if you have something, if you, if, if you'd like to confess for that.
Okay. Forgive me, counsel, for I have sinned. Uh, it's been two months since my last confession.
Two months?
It's a long time.
And in that time, I have, um, I have, I've touched myself with the candles.
Oh, God.
You burnt, you like, you burned yourself on a candle?
Uh, I wish, I wish they burned, but they felt so, so good.
I don't think we realized what we were getting ourselves into.
Maybe he has sort of a back muscle spasm and he was using it as like a, a foam roller, but a wax roller or something.
Um, look, I didn't, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to do what I did and it doesn't sound like anyone will be using the candles anytime soon. And maybe we can order more. Amazon's a little backed up right now. Um, but.
Which candles?
The altar candles, the big, thick, red and white ones.
All right. Yeah. Well, you know, uh, we appreciate you coming forward and, and telling us this. I think it takes a lot to, to be open and honest. Oh, you, you, you're getting very red again. You know, it, it was, you, this was, this was a very vulnerable moment for you. So I don't, I don't think there's anything to be embarrassed about.
I'm just, I'm just alone and I realize that even when this is over, I'm gonna be alone forever. Uh.
Well, you're not alone. You, you're with, uh, the Lord, aren't you? Isn't that the idea?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I guess.
Is this man, uh, is there a motion to absolve this man of all sin?
Uh, yes, motion to, uh, or I guess I second your motion to absolve this man of all sin.
Absolved of all sin.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Father.
So just maybe, you know, uh, let the candles, uh, do what they do.
Okay.
I don't want to sound crazy. Uh, maybe it's the bunker. Was that a cartoon man?
Was it?
I can't tell.
I couldn't tell either.
I couldn't tell.
How do you mean?
I don't know.
Do you have an accent?
Yeah, he did, a little bit.
I didn't pick up on it.
No. Um, he looked very healthy, though.
I agree.
Well, um, you know, sometimes I wish we had candles, because it can get dark here in the bunker. We have some lights, um, but.
We probably should get some in case we do lose power, God forbid.
We've been sort of lucky thus far, but, all right, looks like our next person is in here. Oh, is it Floyd Williams?
Floyd's back.
Hello?
Great to see you, Floyd. How are you?
Uh, you know, as good as you can be with, uh, you know, having to raise the dead.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we, uh, remind me exactly what we, uh, decided on with you last time, Floyd. You needed to sort out a contract.
For thr, over three billion dollars.
Yeah, originally it was 3.85, but markets, uh, you know, the markets are down with everything that's going on.
And we can only spend it on a library, as I recall?
A dictionary.
Dictionary, a dictionary, I'm sorry, that, that was the.
A library would be great. We have a dictionary, yes, so, uh, we're looking at a value now of 3.06 billion dollars.
Oh, we lost some.
It can only be used for the acquisition of one dictionary, so we're obviously not happy about that. Um, so, uh, last I appeared before City Council, it was, uh, a motion approved to allow me to bring back Roger Plantman, the, uh, the sole member of the committee who has passed since, uh, 1662, I believe. Uh, so I got a, I got a medium coming over. Uh, we got everything set up. Uh, you know, the council will be witness. Uh, the medium will be able to bring in the specter into the, to our realm, and we'll just kindly ask for that, uh, for that rule to be broken. Uh, we got everything we need. Uh, we got a, got a short candle. Uh, we're in a lot of candles available. I don't know if there's a run on candles at the store. Uh, we got this pickle jar full of salt, so that's going to work out nicely. We got, uh, uh, holy water and bleach in case he gets nuts and I have to spray him down. Uh, some ant acid tablets, that's more for me. You don't have to worry about that. Uh, we got the, the contract as well, uh, and, uh, as soon as the medium gets here, he's sending me, sent me an email, the incantation, he'll just, uh, say, ma ba bloob kusishan, and then.
Oh, my god, Floyd, Floyd, Floyd!
Who calls me?
Oh, gosh.
What, what, what is this box?
Is this, is this the ghost of?
Are we speaking to?
Was it Roger?
Yes, it's Mr. Plantman to you.
Mr. Plantman. Um, Mr. Plantman, we are, uh, representatives of the coun, the City Council of Madagungscut, uh, New Hampshire.
Ah, wait. Am I, did, who is this body? What's going on here?
That is the body of, of, you, you've been, you've been summoned into the body of Floyd Williams. Uh, we delegated him as part of the, uh, Definition Legacy Trust Fund surplus to try and, uh, work out the details of a deal that you made with, uh, previous city council members.
Oh, this is me, the spectacle one. What year is it?
It is the year 2020.
Wha, wha, what? I've been dead for almost 350 years.
That, that is correct.
Yeah, I think, uh, a lot's changed since then, but, uh, one thing that hasn't changed is, uh, contract law negotiation, and, uh, we currently are unable to access the, uh, 3.06 billion dollars?
Yep.
It's, it's billion?
Uh, yeah, so there's been quite a bit of interest has accrued. I think, uh, the markets have done well, uh, that this fund was invested in, and so, uh, we'd simply just like to be able to recoup the money that you were going to give to us anyways, plus time, plus interest to the point of 3.02 billion dollars.
Uh, and it was for a dictionary, and, and we'd like to just allocate it to sort of collective municipal priorities.
Well, uh, what, interest rates, what, what, what do good dictionaries go for this, uh, time?
Probably five bucks.
Yeah, five, maybe 10 bucks on Amazon if you.
Five whole dollars? Wow, this is, wow. Well, I, all I know is that, I, I can't have, you know, the, the reason that the Definition Legacy Committee was accepted, the reason that I, Roger Plantman, did all the work to bring it all together, gathered my pennies and other coins and placed them in the fund was because there are so many, I, they, I say too many stupid, stupid people out there. They're out there mismangling their words, just mispronouncing syllables. We need a good dictionary. You say I have, what, what was it, two billion? Three billion?
Three billion.
I think it's three now.
3.0.
You should be able to get the best dictionary, best that money can buy, and, and children, every child should get a dictionary. I say every child in Madagungscut should have a dictionary.
You know, I think that.
Oh, but hold, what, what was that?
Well, I think you actually might be on to something, because we are in the bit of a situation right now where our children are all either stuck in their homes or on the police force, uh, and they are in, in, in sort of drastic need of some good learning materials.
You have no better learning than life itself. Why, they should all go outside and meet their neighbors, sit with them, talk with them, learn from the elderly. That's the best thing. I suggest all young children should go out and visit an elderly person, and then discuss about what that elderly person's life was like, and then they can write a little book report about it, and if they need help, they can find good words in, yes, the dictionary. How about that?
I mean, I think that sounds like a wonderful plan and a great idea. I, I promise you now, we will buy a dictionary for every single child in Madagungscut. All you have to do is release the rest of that money to us to sort of pay off some, uh, debts, some bad investments we've made, other things like that.
What kind of bad investments? I'd like to know what my money's being used for. What did you say?
I mean, didn't we, didn't we hire some guy to sort of create, uh, a beach for us or an inlet?
Yeah, we had somebody dig a channel so that we could have a beach in Madagungscut.
I think his name was Tommy Paradise.
Tommy Paradise, I believe he.
We gave him a significant amount of money.
There was a guy who, I think we had a bunch of squirrels, so he bought like a bunch of cougars to come into town to eat the squirrels, and then we had to get someone to eat the cougars.
We made an investment into those sort of transformer police force.
We bought Gundams for the police.
There was a number of music festivals that happened?
Yeah, they all kind of canceled, and we kind of got footed, had to foot the bill.
Let me confer with this, uh, host, uh, Floyd?
Yes.
Uh, what do you think about that?
Uh, you, you know, the town's, uh, city's not in a great spot, so if we wanted to just, as possible, in dictionaries and, uh, get us out of the, uh, bind, that'd be a good thing by me.
What? There aren't any, uh, municipal things that could be spent upon? We, we can't find a better way to allocate these funds? I'm just shocked that we'd be using it for beach, re, de-beaching? I don't even, I don't even know what to call it.
It was a recreation area for the, for the town.
Tennis courts and that kind of thing.
Recreation? Recreation? I thought we were on the same page about the need for dictionaries.
Oh, we are, we are, we are.
Of course, of course, yeah.
We'll have so many, we'll have so many dictionaries, we'll have a, a dictionary depository.
Depository?
With just dictionaries.
Share the dictionaries? Oh, to be frugal with the use of the dictionaries. Is that what you're suggesting?
No, no, never, never, never frugal, more just, uh.
Responsible.
Yeah.
Floyd, what say you?
Uh, I, I think we, uh, uh, you know, I just really don't want to have to track these funds anymore, so whatever you want to do at this point, I'm happy with.
Floyd, do you want me to stay? I can stay. We can go habsies on this corporal forum, and then I can just give you my advice, or we just take responsibility. Choose one.
Uh, to be honest, it's been a little lonely since, since Sheila died, so I could use the.
Oh, my god.
Oh, was Sheila, or betrothed?
Yeah, you know, betrothed to be betrothed, but.
Oh, did you give her a promise to me?
I, yeah, I got, I gave her a ring and everything.
That's very sad.
Are they going to fall in love?
I, are you okay?
Is this a, is this a meeting?
Yeah, I'll be all right. Um, we'll just release the funds, and then we can, we can go on a trip, not very far, but someday we will go far.
Yeah, I'll stay. I like having a purpose. And then, I don't know if you know this about me, but I had my own Sheila once. Her name was Mary.
Oh.
She really liked dictionaries.
Oh, it comes to us.
She wanted one because she wasn't literate. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, yes, Floyd and I will confer about how best to use the funds, and I, I'm sure that, uh, this great amount of money can buy good dictionaries and all.
That's astounding. That's astounding. We really need that, especially now.
More than ever.
Right now, more than ever.
All right, thank you so much, Roger and Floyd Williams. We are three billion dollars richer, and it is. Wow, we may get out of this bunker yet.
Oh, my goodness. Uh, that is just the biggest relief I've ever heard.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow. I love it. I love it. Um, I can't believe we snagged it. I can't believe, I can't believe he figured out how to, how to summon him.
Like, finally some good news, too. He didn't need the salt, he didn't need the bleach water.
Nope.
Just going to sanitize.
Yeah, I got to sanitize really quick, uh, and it looks like our next constituent is calling in. Got a few more left. All right.
Hello, citizen, you're on with the Madagungscut City Council.
Hello, hello, Councilman Mitchards, and, uh, Councilwoman Wilson Hayes.
Hello.
As you know, my name's Lawrence. I was the first person to start social distancing here in Madagungscut.
You were smart.
Way ahead of the curve.
Yeah, I started doing it a long time ago, even before coronavirus was a thing.
Yes, some, some had come to call you the Madagungscut Hermit. I don't know if that, uh, if that reached you, but, uh.
No, that's the first time I've heard of that name.
Oh, well, people, people have been talking about your distancing for quite a while.
It's a compliment.
Yeah, yes, and before, uh, before I became this Madagungscut Hermit, I had to go out in the world and interact with people, and I realized I don't like that.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And then, once I became this hermit, I realized how much I liked not interacting with people. And so, I would like to announce, even now, that I'm, I'm starting revolution.
What kind of revolution?
Cultural or?
Against this town of Madagungscut.
Oh, that's, uh, concerning.
Now, I hope you mean in the sense of like, uh, you know, we had our recycling revolution a couple, uh, years back, and we sort of revolutionized the way we recycle. Is that, is that what you're doing? Is this some?
No, I mean, like, I'm taking over revolution.
Oh. How, how so?
Oh, I, I, but I already stole the keys to the town hall.
Oh, my gosh.
Those are.
Those are the keys to town hall.
And is that the fob for the?
Yeah, it's the city fob.
Yep.
I, so, so, Randy, is anyone watching town hall right now?
Currently a bunch of children.
Okay, uh, we haven't been back there in well over a month.
They don't really fit in the SWAT gear, but they're there.
You know how easy it is to distract children? I just, I just put on my phone, played some TikTok, whatever it's called, and they all gathered around and started making their own.
Distracted the kid with TikTok and.
Dong, how did you not foresee this?
I don't know what TikTok is. None of us do.
And so, yes, I snuck into City Hall and I stole some things that should concern you, the populace of Madagungscut.
What, you stole some things? What, what kind of thing? Oh, hey, 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 no, no, we need that, we need that.
That is the public safety budget for the next two years.
Yeah, and it was just lying around, all these $20 bills just lying around.
We were sorting them. We were sorting them before this happened, trying to figure out the budget for FY21.
And then Randy ran in and said, there's a, there's a, everyone's sick, you gotta go, you gotta go now. Where are your kids?
So we left the money all over the floor on the desk.
We quite literally left it on the table.
We did leave a lot of money on the table.
And now it's all mine. This is just one bill.
All right, if you're a good citizen, you would put that back.
Well, maybe in your, your town, but in my town, I can do whatever I want.
Okay, you know what, Lawrence? I say, once this is all over, we have a big Madagungscut party at your house. I say we invite everybody in town. We all come over at the same time. We'll be sharing stories about what we did during the pandemic.
And we'll just talk to you.
How does that sound? A big social event.
I don't like social events. That's why I'm the hermit, or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly. Sounds like we have leverage on you, Lawrence.
Oh, 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 yeah? What about this, uh, this lint roller I found?
Hey, that's mine!
Why would you need a lint roller if you were clean?
Because sometimes when you're working around Mitchards over here, some of the lint from his jacket can sometimes get on your sports jacket.
I have a medical condition. I make lint.
Well, not when I have any, not while I have anything to say about it.
Darn it, he got us again.
And then, what I think is the last piece of evidence I'll need, a water bottle. Yes, that, that's right. You drank water. A lot of it.
I mean, we actually do have a whole pallet full of water bottles down here. I stole one of them, uh, last night, but.
There are people in Madagungscut who need water.
I have all the water.
You have all the water?
All the water that was in town hall. Not, I'm not a villain. I didn't steal the town's wa, public water supply.
He's not a villain. He's not a villain. Okay.
Uh, okay, because we've had some run-ins before.
Yeah. Well.
Look, Lawrence, you've stolen a lot of important city items here that we'd like to get back. What are, what are your terms? What is it going to take for us to set this right?
Just, well, right now, everything's fine, because we're all, we're all social distancing, but once this is over, once, once things go back to normal, what about if social distancing becomes the new normal?
Wouldn't, oh, you'd want that, right?
Exactly.
But do you mean for everyone or just for you?
For everyone.
This sounds like what, uh, Mr. Morris, uh, was proposing, is he doesn't want to go back to the way things were before.
It seems like the people in Madagungscut are more happy now.
Yeah, it does seem like everyone is kind of thriving ever since we weren't allowed to see each other.
Maybe everyone besides us.
Exactly.
Honestly, Lawrence, we may have to, we may have to get back to you on this. This has been a sort of a recurring theme of the night, and.
I mean, what we can promise you is Dr. Fauci has told us there is no end in sight.
So that's at least, yeah, the light at the end of this tunnel for now.
And I mean presumably, uh, not presumably, but like, given our history of dealing with issues, it's possible that this lasts much longer in Madagungscut than it ever did in anywhere else.
Wow, uh, I wasn't ex, I was expecting a lot more pushback.
Well, look, we want to get back to normal, but I don't think there's anything we can really do about it.
Yep.
We've got vault people bursting out, spreading it around. We got tire swing, trying to get people's butts on him again.
And honestly, at this point, you have the funds to deal with it.
That's actually a good point.
You have the city's budget.
That's a good point.
Luckily, he doesn't have that three billion yet.
Oh.
All right, well, thank you so much, Lawrence, for calling in, and enjoy the rest of your, your alone time. You really are. Thank you, Lawrence.
Another revolution.
I can't believe people are breaking into town hall.
Yeah, we really should have locked that down. Where is, um, Hampus?
You know, he hasn't called.
Do you think he's okay?
I mean, I hope so. I know the Madagung squad were going to try to figure something out.
Yeah, well, they were going to try to shoot the virus.
Yeah, so they, they may be in some sort of undisclosed location right now trying to battle it.
Last I heard about Hampus, he was supposed to go to his grandfather's memorial, but he wasn't there, which is unusual, because it was a state event.
That is unusual.
We'll have to track down Hampus at some point and figure out what he's up to. We'll have to track down Hampus at some point and figure out what he's up to. Um, it looks like we have another citizen coming in right now, do we have Murph the dinosaur, um, on the line? Murph the dinosaur?
Alright, okay, how's everyone doing? Alright, this is Murph, uh, can, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we got you, loud and clear Murph.
Alright, uh, Jav and Ruth, I mean, this is like a great, great time to be on the, uh, at the city council, I just wanna say thank you for having me here.
Thank you for calling in, uh, thank you.
Oh yeah, oh you're right, okay, uh, and anyway, um, woo, let's see, so like maybe I'll give you like a, a few things about myself, and then I'll talk about what I wanna talk about, does that like sound okay, is that like okay?
Sure.
Yeah, that's perfect, sure.
Alright, yeah, well, so, uh, my name is Murph the dinosaur, uh, and you know, like, um, I'm, well, okay, this is like a little secret here, but I'm the only talking toy in the toy room, and like my owner Charlie, he like, he like doesn't know, um.
He doesn't know you can talk?
He like doesn't know I can talk, and I'm like the only one, but like I found out how to use the internet, and I went on Facebook, and then I found, you know, the city council, and I wanted to like share some things, so like I just wanted to like share that with everyone.
Wow.
That's great, yeah, it's like a Toy Story situation, except you're the only one, that must be kinda lonely.
But I'm real, I mean, that's, that's the other.
Oh, of cour- of course, yeah, you're not a fictional.
But yeah, I know, I know what you mean, uh, so like I wanted to talk a little bit about like boredom, and I've been like doing stuff online to give people like boredom tips.
Oh, great.
And I just wanted to make sure the two of you, like aren't really bored, like, cause you know, you're like locked inside.
We have.
We're pretty bored, we are, so we could use some of these hot tips.
Ruth has been staring at a spider for a week.
What's that?
Ruth has been staring at a spider for a week.
He's almost got him, almost got the fly.
Did you name the spider?
Uh, I named him Talbot.
She named him Talbot.
Talbot? What's a Talbot?
It's, uh, like a, like a, like a tall, like a tall bot, but a Talbot.
Like a tall robot, alright, that sounds cool, like a tall robot, anyway, like I wanted to show with you, uh, my tip here, which is to make friends, so like you're already making friends with the spider, I wanna show you who, uh, I've made friends with, so hold on, one second.
Great. Oh?
It's like, uh.
Uh, okay, can you see, can you see, can you see what, what I'm showing here?
I believe that's, uh, Chalula?
Yeah, it's, 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 so like I've been hanging out with like the Chalula girl for like, for like my meals and like, you know, we talk a lot, and, you know, she's kinda quiet, so like, you know, she doesn't say too much, but like, like, like between, like between us, like, like there's definitely something going on, but like, you know, sometimes, we don't have to always talk about stuff, we can just like hang out and like, just pass the time, and you know, like, I'll just sit and then she'll, she'll look, and then I'll sit some more and like, I mean, like I can tell, you know what I'm saying, like you guys know what I'm saying, right?
Right, right.
I mean, I can put, we can kind of assume, but I don't know, uh, what, what do you mean?
We're like, I mean, we're like hanging out, you know, like it's just going well.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, I don't wanna like, I don't wanna like force things, but like, you know, it's always good to have friends, you know?
Not super serious yet, but there, there's something developing.
It's not serious, I mean, like, I'm serious about it, but it's not serious, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Yeah, so I hope you're both, uh, you're both quarantined together then I would assume, cause again, social distancing, okay, great, great, great.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to leave the house, like I've never left the house before, so like, everybody interacted, like I'm always around, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, now, uh, has Charlie or the rest of the family, are they aware of this going on, are they okay with you sort of, uh, courting the Chalula girl?
Well, I mean, I mean, like do I need to ask like permission or something?
Well, I just mean they're gonna probably find that the bottle of Chalula is just out and about in the bedroom, I would think that maybe they might, uh.
Whoa, whoa, come on now, come on, like right now, we're just having like lunch, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, it's a to- it's a toy, I assumed you were in a bedroom, I just mean.
You're like, you like went from zero to like a hundred, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, whatever room you're in, maybe it's a toy room, they're gonna see a bottle of hot sauce and say this isn't where this goes, and probably put it back in the fridge or the kitchen.
Probably a good idea, probably should like put it back, so like they don't suspect. That's, that's like, that's a good idea, yeah, I hadn't really thought about that.
Good advice, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good thing, uh, anyway, that's pretty much all, that's all, pretty much all I got here, I just wanted to share that, and just make sure that you're not bored, and so this is what I'm doing, uh, I'm having fun with the Chalula girl, uh, lady, she's a lady.
She's a lady.
Lady, yes.
And, and that's, that's it, okay, Murph, goodbye.
Oh, Murph, oh, I really, I enjoyed him.
He's wonderful.
I, he gone too soon, I.
Well, he's not dead.
No, I know, but I, I almost wanted more boredom tips from him, because I think he's sort of proving, he's thriving in sort of this, and I think what we're seeing tonight is a lot of our constituents are thriving.
It seems that way.
Especially Murph the dinosaur.
We might need to look at the stats as far as like crime and health and education, but this, uh, this idea of keeping things this way.
I think it's, it's, they're on to something, um, and I'm, I'm glad sort of in this, it seems like during this time, uh, Murph found a, a voice, and you know, maybe more magical things like that will happen, uh, here in Madagungscut during that, I hope it works out between him and the, uh, Chalula girl.
Oh, me too.
Alright, well, it looks like we have one more constituent, so thank you all who are still with us this evening, we have one more constituent who is joining us. Uh, hello, you're on with the Madagungscut City Council.
Hello, we see, we see one of you, looks like another one's connecting.
There we go.
Whoa!
Hello.
Don, there he is, always late.
That's Squeaky, oh, goodbye, giving me that.
Always late, this one.
Ah, we have jobs.
Oh, thank you for calling in, what can we help you with?
Hey, council!
Yeah?
Have you talked to yourself? Schools, they're no good no more.
Schools?
Schools.
We've heard that a lot tonight, that schools aren't really good anymore.
We have a solution for you, don't we, Squeaky?
We should do, because I bet you haven't heard for the first time tonight, that school buildings are out.
They're out?
They're out of here!
Stop it with them!
That's right, that's why me and Dawn are proposing to build one-room schoolhouses like the olden days.
Oh, like Little House on the Prairie.
Fourteen whatevers.
That's right.
So, listen, yeah, look at, look, listen, look at me, listen.
We're looking.
Yep.
Every single house has a backyard, do they not?
But, most.
Most houses, not, I wouldn't say every house.
If the children are going to school, they do, or they should.
Thank you, Squeaky.
If children are going to school, they should have a backyard.
That's right, you're at least got your grass!
You need grass if you're going to school.
How you gonna learn about photosynthesis?
Thank you, baby, now listen, I don't know if you know this about me, but I was the head engineer for Fire Festival.
Oh.
Head engineer.
Head engineer for the Fire Festival, he built the porta-potties, he built the little ricketty, the, the boats that transported them to the island.
I built boats, people, I know how to build schoolhouses.
That's a, that's an incredibly impressive resume right there, I mean, it was a festival.
To you, I'mma build a little tiny one-room school in the back of everyone's yard.
But it's not just that, because Dawn's gonna build the buildings, and I'm gonna recruit the talent, because.
Tell who you are, Squeaky!
Yeah, because you know something, that I was the head of talent at Colonial Williamsburg for a year and a half.
Almost two years, baby.
Almost two years, if I didn't, if I didn't get hurt, almost two years.
Blew out both of her ankles.
Colonial Williamsburg is quite a family, family, uh, trip right there, we made the trip about five years ago, I loved it, so, kudos to you, loved it.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
You see the connection between the family and the school then?
Oh, do I, I mean, everybody's sort of in cloaks, close proximity, you know, you get to sort of know each other better, it's a wide age span.
So, so you're going to hire the teachers to teach in these, uh, one-room schoolhouse for every child?
Well, sure, because, you know, you gotta have a lady in there.
You gotta have a lady teacher!
Gotta have a lady in there.
You gotta have a lady teacher!
And preferably she's childless and single, and actually I made an advert, if you don't mind, I also put it on Craigslist, but we gotta get ladies in the one-room schoolhouses, and they think, you know, it's basically like a studio apartment, it's a good deal!
It's a good deal, baby!
It's a good deal, cause it's got room and board, and.
One room.
It's one room, but it's very cozy.
It's a good room.
Cause Dawn's gonna build it, and he builds the best.
I built the best, thank you, Squeaky.
So you're looking for single women to live in people's backyards in a shed?
To teach!
To teach, to make a career!
We pay these women the best bucks.
And listen, we're recruiting, I'm recruiting, to be honest with you, everywhere. I've been in women's shelters, there's a lot of interest to get out of there and start a new life.
So, I do have a question, uh, I mean, we had a really up and coming teacher on the line earlier tonight, a Mr. Morris, who, I mean, he's a male, right, I think he's single, it seemed like he was, cause he didn't have any friends, um, what do you say to the young men who are looking to get involved?
They can help you build.
They're not safe, they're not safe, and you know what, you get one complaint, that's it!
That's it.
That's it, we're all fucked!
Put a hammer in his hand, I'll teach him how to build a school.
That's right, Dawn has a really successful apprenticeship program!
That's right, I was on The Apprentice.
I, I don't mean to pry, but how did the two of you meet? Because one of you was working at Colonial Williamsburg and the other was building outhouses for the Fire Festival, and I'm sure there's a story there.
Boy, is there.
Well, I'll tell you, I got hurt.
Blew at her ankles.
On campus, at Colonial Williamsburg, trying to, I got shot in the ankles, cause I was.
You were shot in the ankles?
I did, cause I told you, I was a head of, I was educational programmer, and I was teaching the squad of fires.
How to shoot.
How to shoot, and we got some rookies on the squad, and all of a sudden, I look back, and my ankle's bleeding!
Oh gosh, oh gosh.
Her ankles bleeding, she's on the ground, she's almost losing consciousness, she looks across the field, and who's, who's running in slow motion?
Is it you?
Who's that?
Is it you?
Why, why were you running in slow motion rather than at regular speed?
Because my ankles were also shot.
And also the costumes are really heavy, and Dawn, don't blame me, but you don't love running too much.
Wait, so you were in a costume as well? Wait, so did.
I was in a costume, I was pretending to be Batman.
They use live ammunition at Colonial Williamsburg? They have Batman at Colonial Williamsburg?
Yeah, I mean, people, it's a special treat, I was on vacation from the Fire Festival.
Okay.
And I thought to myself, what, what do I wanna do this weekend, of course I wanna be Batman at Colonial Williamsburg.
That makes sense.
Where could I get away with this costume, he thought to himself.
Exactly, I rented it for three weeks and I didn't know where to play it. So anyway, I was running in slow motion, cause I was shot in the ankles, bing bang boom, I'm married to my woman now.
That's right, that's right.
That's the story.
What a beautiful love story, I, I, how are your ankles now?
Mine are fake.
It's a fake.
Um, mine's made out of Legos.
Mine's got some, uh, nails in it, but actually Dawn put them in, he insisted, and they're initial- they're initialed with our names.
Yeah, it was real nice treat, and I took out my hammer and I blasted him into her ankles.
It was a real nice treat to drive autographed nails in your wife's ankles?
Well, the autographing was nice.
Oh, I see.
Sweet, I liked it!
She liked it, I mean, we both cried, but after a while it was fun.
You know, I, I, I think, you know, the idea you guys are bringing to us with the sort of one-room schoolhouses and backyards, you know, we haven't even thought about our reopening plan just yet, just because again, Dr. Fauci's sort of saying this could go on through the end of the year, but I think we need thinkers like you, innovative thinkers on our team.
Appreciate that.
To sort of like think outside the box and how we're gonna move forward in this new normal, so I think, I think you might be the first two people on our reopening sort of, uh, team.
Dawn? Are you hearing this?
Do you hear what I hear, my baby girl?
Uh, what?
I mean, we are gonna have to also allow male teachers as well as female teachers, I don't think they're gonna budge on, on that.
Hard no, hard no.
It's not safe.
It's not safe.
Why is it not safe?
That's not, it's not safe.
You don't wanna male in a classroom with young.
Don't say it.
Alright, alright.
Don't say that.
I'm not gonna say it, I'm not gonna say it, we'll just think it.
We'll just think it.
Okay, well, great, I think, well, we'll be in, we'll certainly be in touch about reopening our educational system at some point, thank you very much.
Thank you both, and best of luck.
Squeaky and Dawn.
Oh wow, what a, what a trip, oh gosh.
Wow, a lot of, a lot of people really, uh, thinking about how to put this town back together, how to keep things going, a lot of helpful things tonight, I think.
I know, I think there's a lot we, we're gonna be taking away from this meeting, and, and you know, I know tonight, when I go back to my little, my little corner, um, and I get under my one blanket, um, no pillow, I'm gonna, I'm gonna think about what everyone sort of said here tonight, and are we better off today than we were before? And I think there's, there is something to be said about, maybe, maybe we are better off in this new Madagungscut, who knows? We have a lot of time to think about it. Yeah.
We have got nothing but time, right, oh, do we have someone else, uh, coming in there, Andy?
We've got one more.
It looks like we have somebody else, yeah, we've got.
What a surprise, I thought.
Great, we have another citizen coming in.
Oh, hello?
Great, we see you on, we see your name on the screen. We see you, citizen, oh, okay, hold on.
There we are.
We, we have no sound on you yet, but we see you.
We can't hear you, but we see you.
Is your audio off over there?
Your, your microphone might be muted, citizen. You might need to check, uh, the bottom of the.
Okay, okay.
Oh, we can hear you.
Hello? Hello?
We got you, we got you, hello?
Okay, okay, hello?
We got you, we got you, hello?
Okay, 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 okay?
Yes, yep.
Yes, 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 okay, thank goodness, oh, worry about the technical difficulties there, uh, it's a little hard to remember how these, uh, magic boxes work these days.
I can hardly figure about half the time.
Oh, very good, that's a very good joke, uh, so, hello, hello, Madagungscut City Council, uh, my name is, uh, Mark Chimpasano.
Alright.
And, uh, I am here to tell you that I am ahead of the curve.
Oh.
What, uh, what curve?
Well, it's, it's obvious, I've solved all our problems, I figured it out, we don't need to, we don't need to worry about rejoining society ever again. Devolve, like me, once I was like you, smooth and flashy.
It's the kind of thing.
Hardly covered in fur at all, appeared if I was lucky, if I had worked at it. But now, look, behold, I am the wave of the future.
Were, were you a man?
I am a man.
You are a man.
But I'm also something less now, and something more. A monkey, I, I'm a monkey.
How did you, how?
That's kinda clear, but.
Yeah, no, you're, you look like.
You can see me, I'm a monkey.
We don't wanna be rude, but you look like a.
I was working on it for a while, took me a little while.
Yeah, look, how did, how did you become a monkey?
Well, we've all been sort of cooped up for a while, um, you know, and one day, I was hanging out in my underpants, on a teleconference, and I realized, you know, there's just no reason to keep up pretenses anymore, so I just sort of zoop, slid back the old, you know, evolutionary timeline. What's the point, right? Right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we're all tired of it, tired of pretending, society means nothing anymore, we're all just apes. Beautiful, soft apes.
I mean, that's certainly, that's certainly true, we're all, we're all apes, but I, you said you're ahead of the curve, how does, how is this preventing, uh, the issues that, um, this virus is, is put all of us in, how are you, are you not susceptible to it as a, as a monkey?
Well, first of all, no, monkeys can't get coronavirus, look it up. Look it up, monkeys and dogs.
Okay.
Second of all, much lower calorie needs, smaller. Second of all, much lower calorie needs, smaller brain.
I mean.
Third of all, bananas, way better now.
Oh, really?
Oh my god, yeah.
So they taste different to you?
I, if I could tell you, Councilman Minchard, the sheer luxury. Oh, oh, oh banana. Oh, you'd, you'd devolve right now, you'd take off that tie, you'd put on an ape suit.
I mean, y- you're making it sound pretty great right now.
It is pretty great, yeah. Only downsides I've seen so far are, one, harder to use technology, two, not allowed in stores.
Right.
Huh, we don't allow monkeys in stores?
No, it's, it's pretty bigoted if you ask me.
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty uh black and white blue law.
Yeah, no monkeys allowed in stores. Apparently, apparently, I'm naked. And that's not okay.
Couldn't you put clothing on? Then would you be allowed in a store?
Well.
We don't, that, is there ape clothing? Yeah.
Okay, there is, but it's a tool of man. I might as well just revolve.
I mean, I'm not allowed in a store if I'm naked.
Yeah, but you're not covered, you know, the stuff.
Well, I've got a little bit of this stuff, I guess not quite as much as you.
Yeah, well, you, you know, amp it up, amp it, push, push, bam, boom.
So it seems like you're, you're really enjoying this though, despite some of these minor sort of downsides.
That's right.
So are you recommending sort of all of Madagung Scott, you know, devolve and become apes and monkeys and?
Yes.
Oh, man.
I mean, how would, how would we go about doing that? What's the first step? If I wanted to, let's say I wanted to see what it was like for a little bit try it out, what would I do?
Okay, okay, so, obviously, you know, you don't wanna just dive right into the deep end, right?
No, no.
You know, I, I get it, I get it, it's a big move. The first move you wanna take is you wanna go buy a bunch of bananas and send them to me.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and then, and then what happens? Does, do we start like
Uh.
Growing fur or what?
Oh, yeah, um. Sure.
Hmm.
That's um.
Doesn't seem very certain.
One sec, Ruth, is this another banana pyramid scheme?
No.
I think it might be.
Where they tell you you can be like them if you just send them all the bananas, and then there's another chimp somewhere else that has him sending all the bananas to him?
Then we're gonna end up spending our three billion on bananas.
This is not a multi-level monkey scheme.
We need, we need to institute best practices.
No, I was so close.
The three billion, we can't spend our money on it.
Please, they won't sell me bananas.
We barely, the amount of debt we have, I'm sorry, we really can't do this.
We're trying to better ourselves.
I was never a man.
You've always been a monkey?
Yeah.
Hey!
This seemed like an opportunity. Think about it, it was plausible, you were buying it.
We did, we, we, we were.
Taking advantage of people in a crisis is wrong, okay, Mr. Chimpasano?
I know, and you know what? I've learned my lesson. I'll never do it again.
Promise?
I promise, and you know, I think I've learned and grown so much tonight that I deserve a reward. Of fifty dollars worth of bananas.
We, we cannot, we cannot send you fifty dollars worth of bananas, that's.
Okay, forty-five dollars worth of bananas.
We can't, there's no negotiating, we don't, we'd have to appropriate that money, we're already.
That's more than our public safety budget.
Yeah, it's twenty dollars for the safety budget for two years.
One banana.
Look, we can't even leave this basement right now, so.
Then what good is a fucking city council?
Oh, gosh.
Come on.
I will say, I'll say, I'll tell you what we can do is I would like to uh file a motion to say that monkeys can enter stores.
And I second that motion. Motion approved.
Oh my. I'll admit, I walked in here today hoping to scam two council people out of a lot of bananas. But I'm going to walk out of here today, a monkey that can shoplift.
No, that wasn't the idea, the idea wasn't so you could, it's so that you can purchase.
I'm going now.
Bamboozled again.
Alright, well, ran, Officer Dong, if you could have the children uh look out for shoplifting.
Of course.
By, by monkeys.
Yeah, of course.
That sounds like something we would, might have to do now.
Yeah, we might have to check in on those children at some point as well. I, I have no idea what my children are up to, but it sounds like they're on this police force. Well, uh, that does um conclude our city council meeting for this evening, I think. Uh, we're not going anywhere, we're staying here in this bunker, once again practicing social distancing, uh, but. What is this? What is this? Oh, oh.
Has there been a breach?
Is there a breach? Is somebody in the bunker?
Someone's in the bunker.
Alright, we gotta go.
We gotta go, this meeting is adjourned.
Get the bad TV.